Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, what's your name? Good morning, welcome to the October 19th, 2011 Board of Commissioners' meeting.
We have a trained one, come here baby, come here, come here, look what I got. Look at this nice girl. We have about a year old white boxer, beautiful dog, she has a little bit of spotting going on, almost like the faded out Dalmatian or something, she's really got a lot of energy, she makes somebody a great pet. Boxers are great dogs. If you're not into boxers, we have lots of dogs at the Dog Pound that you could come down and pick one out, they do get spayed and neutered before you take them, if they're not already spayed or neutered. They get a lot of their shots, other than their rabies and things like that, so we also have a website you can check out if you want to check out our website. We need your help because we get full real fast, so come on down to our Dog Pound, make that be the first stop you go to before purchasing an animal, a dog, because we really need your help. Lot of people out there, somebody should come, oh, and it's not available until Saturday at 3 o'clock. Come down and get her, she's beautiful.
Madam Clerk?
At 9:45, Don Addy and the veterans on the current status of Valor Home, request Lorraine County Service Commission to coexist with VA St. Joe's. Under Resolution Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, on the 5 of 13, there was a transfer for Alcohol and Drug Board of 50,000 for sick time and vacation time, nothing else as far as how many employees there were, do you know anything on that Jim?
No, actually Alcohol and Drug has their own policy and would be administering that themselves, but if there's some question, I can certainly make a call and get an answer to that, so.
Yeah, it just seems like a lot of money, I mean, I know they have their own, but a lot of taxpayer money going out for paid sick and vacation, so just like to know how many employees it is.
Why don't we hold that, and I'll have an answer, we can deal with it next week.
Okay.
Sure it's not urgent. Okay, hold 5 of 13 there.
Sure. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you. Commissioner Calo, I do have some potential new hires at 911 that I wish to discuss with the Board, also ongoing labor negotiations specifically with the Vaskyl Bridge, and possibly an employee extension at the Office on Aging. So, all three of those subjects are allowable for executive session discussion, so it asks at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, say we go into executive session, have those talks, thank you.
Thanks.
Approved away the reading, same the County Commissioners' meeting, Minnesota, October 11th, 2011?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Withdraw the request to vacate a portion of Russell Street Sheffield Township dated July 21st and September 23rd, 2011.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Teresa, are they going to refile again?
He's hoping to, but he's going to try to talk to Sheffield Township, as well as the Engineers on one page together, to try to see what Sheffield Township exactly wants.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, instruct clerk to advertise for bids for the Amherst City Hall Phase 2 Basement Renovation Project at 206 South Macon Street, Amherst, notice being in the Chronicle on October 21st, 28th, bid opening at 3:00 PM, deadline on November 7th, and will be in Meeting Room E, estimated cost is $12,800.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Workforce Development, approve and enter new various purchase service contracts with funds available through VA effective October 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2012. Tutoring Pamela Dickey at $17,200, Jay Brett Dickey at $17,200, mentoring Michelle McGee at $5,400, Joanne Lopez $9,000, Alicia Neely at $9,000, and treasurer DeVessel Zink at $9,000.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Cortez?
Yes, Commissioners, I'd like to modify this resolution a bit to reflect more accurately that this is a not-to-exceed amount, that these are not specific payments. These personal service contracts call for a certain amount of payment per units of cost, and I want everybody to know that, we just don't give these people this amount of money upfront, so if it can be reflected in the resolution and not to exceed based upon unit cost, I would appreciate that.
I'll make that motion to amend it.
Second?
Mr. Joe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Well, I had a question on that, how did these individuals get picked? I'm seeing two with the same last name.
They applied, this has been an open process on our website, and the posting has actually not come down. We've had a very challenging time getting mentors and tutors to work with our youth programming, and we have never taken the application, or, excuse me, the notice of hiring off the Board because of how weak the response has been.
Okay, and these people got the credentials to go with it?
Yes, so they were interviewed and screened over at Workforce Development. I have not had a personal opportunity to look at them myself, but I know that they've been screened over there and they've met all the qualifications, that's one of the difficulties that we've encountered, we have a pretty stringent amount of requirements because of the population that they deal with, and so we've been, as I said earlier, challenged getting people with that credentialing to make application. So I'm actually glad we're talking about it, so anybody who's watching that wants to do mentor or tutoring, it's up on our website, and I would ask that they just take a look at it, make application, we still need a lot more mentors and tutors.
Okay.
Under Job and Family, authorized purchase service agreement with Childcare Resource Center Lorraine to provide certification training for Type B Child Daycare Providers for State Fiscal Year 12, effective November 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2012, at a value not to exceed $13,110. Authorized Director to execute in behalf of the Board and amend for changes in program and increase value of Prosecutor's Approve as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advertise requests for proposals for classroom training, job placement, job retention program, and on-the-job training. Notice will be in the Journal on October 24th and 31st, bids to be open at 2:00 PM on November 7th, Meeting Room E.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advertise requests for proposals for personal development, self-exploration, asset discovery, and environmental education program. Notice will be in the Chronicle on October 24th and 31st, bids to be open at 2:15 on November 7th, Meeting Room E.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, except on behalf of Lorraine Township and the improvements at Creekside Subdivision. Platte is recording Lorraine County Records of Platte's Volume 82, pages 57 and 58. Storms, series, and concrete pavement were installed in 2004, and fees were paid by the developer for, 1, Elk Creek Drive and Road Number T-296, commencing at Whitehead Road, County Road 48, and extend west a distance of 2,781.25 feet, or 0.527 miles in length, and ending in a temporary turnaround. 2, Creekside Street and Road Number T-297, commencing at Elk Creek Drive, ending north at a distance of 1,208.63 feet, or 0.229 miles in length, and ending in a temporary turnaround.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve a new renewal agreement with Dr. M. Ahmad for psychiatric services, effective December 1st, 2011 through November 30th, 2014, contains 90-day cancellation clause, Dr. Ahmad will be paid $163.91 per hour by weekly.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Prosecutor?
No additional comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Innes, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have no report this morning.
Mr. S. Report?
Well, Thursday, I attended the grand opening of the new store in Oberlin for Goodwill. They had a wonderful opening, a lot of people showed up, they did a lot of sales that day. I also purchased a few items, which I knew I would, so make sure you go out there and check that store out, it's really nice, clean, brand-new looking, smells great, everything, it's a really nice store. And then, you know, if you have items that you want to get rid of, make sure you donate them to Goodwill, they really put all the donation money that they make on their sales, and it goes right back into our community, helps the veterans, helps people who are felons trying to get rehired and into employment opportunities, and are disabled, so they help a lot of people in our community. Sunday, we had the Terry Kitchen Swing Band with Ray Youer singing, it was a really nice event, I enjoyed it, a lot of old music that I remember my mom and dad listening to, so it was a really nice event, and it's actually the first time I heard Ray Youer sing, and he did a really good job. Tonight is New Russia Township's meeting, and at 7 o'clock on Russia, or, no, Butternut Ridge Road, I'm sorry, and we're going to be discussing the sales tax out there tonight, so anybody interested in learning about that can attend, and I believe that's the end of my report.
Yeah, just real quick, it's New Russia Township Hall, it's 46268 Butternut Ridge.
Oh, good, thank you.
Last Wednesday, the Board of Commissioners moved the meeting to Tuesday, I was in Columbus meeting with Department of Development and the new jobs Ohio staff, again, how the project is going to go forward when regards to us doing our job creation, it was a nice two-and-a-half hour meeting, it was a tough time getting down there, I was half an hour late, so it took three and a half hours to get to Columbus with all the accidents. Again, very good meeting, myself, Dave Doom, who is our President of the Association, was there, along with Steve Arnt from Ottawa County, and Deborah Lieberman from Montgomery County. A lot of changes coming forward, and I'll be on a conference call later today with Team Lorraine County and Team Neo on what our part's going to be in it locally. Last week also, once I got back to town that night, I dressed Coalition for Hispanic Issues in Progress, did a presentation on Issue 22 urging those to vote yes for the court percent temporary sales tax for criminal justice for Lorraine County. Myself, Judge Berta, Prosecutor Will, and Sheriff Stomini spoke to 1,000 people at the Western Reserve with Sharon Reebok, nice to see you here today Sharon, I hope it went well. On Thursday night, myself and Commissioner Williams presented to the 4-H Volunteer Dinner in Wellington, and gave out awards to the students that participate in that. On Friday, a long day at the WACCA, we started early doing interviews for the new Executive Director position, that went till after 5 o'clock, and we also held our meeting to approve projects for the tip. And again, thanks everyone for the fundraiser, it was a nice turnout, we raised some money for the campaign, which was very nice. Also on Saturday, I had the opportunity, Commissioner Williams set up, I spoke to the new Lorraine County Tea Party at the old Amherst Post Office, 40 or 50 people, and it went well, so we've been out and about everywhere speaking, so appreciate your support on Issue 22, and the yard signs, or if anybody would like to contact me, we have yard signs for Issue 22.
Rob Shitower asked that at this meeting tonight, and at other meetings, the township meetings, if we could bring signs out for all the different townships.
My truck is full.
Okay.
Okay, well, I've been out for some personal issues, passing on my father. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who sent me well wishes and attended the wake. My father was 71 years old, veteran, and just a very good person, I've been blessed to know him for 35 years, I have a lot of wonderful memories, so I want to thank everyone who came to Board, the cards they received, Mr. Innes, Mr. Cortez, and all the other people in Lorraine County, thank you so much. On Thursday, I did attend the 4-H Program with Mr. Calo, and then on Saturday, I was speaking at a different Lorraine County Tea Party group, the one without the dog. I'm sorry, yeah, it's okay.
It's all right, you've been there a couple weeks, you're late on it, but it'll work.
But, very good meeting and that, and got to hear a lot of different types of feedback, so. All right, end of my report.
Madam Clerk?
Tuesday, October 25th, at 11:00, will be our Investment Advisory Committee, Board Correspondents.
Will the reading be waived?
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Teresa, I would prefer us go into the meeting with Don Addy, we do public comment afterwards, if that's okay with the Board?
Yeah.
Mr. Addy, your show, welcome.
Well, first of all, Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for giving us this time, it's actually a two-part presentation I'd like to bring up. First of all, Dan Gelati, he's our Chairman for Bylaws for the Valor Home, and then I'll take over.
They brought presents for you.
Oh.
Oh, okay, great, thanks.
Chocolate?
Unfortunately, no. I never would have been able to get them out of the house with my granddaughters, and my wife, and my daughter.
Thank you.
As Don stated, my name is Dan Gelati, Chairman of the Bylaws Committee for Valor Home Lorraine County, and we're here this morning to give you a briefing on the progress that's being made towards completion of the project. In your folder, I'd like to bring a couple of things to your attention, if you'll open your folder, and on the left-hand side, there's a trifold. There is a trifold. And on the back of the trifold, the title up there is Family and Community Service, and then Valor Home Lorraine County Executive Committee. What I'd like to do is let you know who is on the Board, the Advisory Board, for Valor Home Lorraine County. Mr. Sam Felton is our Chair, past Veteran of the Year in Lorraine, and also currently the new Commander of the National Association of Black Veterans Chapter that he started. Mr. Dale Smith, who is not present, is our Vice Chair. Mr. Leo Citro, my Commander at Italian-American War Veterans Post 1, he's also now the State Commander for Italian-American War Veterans Ohio. Bill Knapp, Treasurer, and Bill is going to try to be here. Myself is Bylaws Committee. Dina Farrar, from Lorraine Community College, is our Community and Publicity Committee. Of course, Don Addy is our Finance Committee. Don Bates is handling Government Affairs for us, and Carol Knapp is handling our Veterans Administration Volunteer Service Committee, and we'll talk a little bit later about volunteerism. That, also on the Board, is our Parliamentarian, and it's Mr. Matthew Slater, who works for Family and Community Services out of Ravenna, Ohio. And Matt is the one that came forth and contacted Don Bates back in 2009, Don, is that right? And Family and Community Services already has two Valor Homes, one in Portage County, which is up and running, and a new one which is being built in Summit County, to do the same things that we're working towards here in Lorraine County, and that is to provide transitional housing for homeless veterans. So this process has been ongoing originally since 2009. We did get tentative approval, and now if you look at the next two pieces of paper on that left-hand side, one is a letter from the Department of Veterans Affairs dated October 4th, addressed to Mr. Frazone, who's the CEO of Family and Community Services, and telling us that the project has been approved and funding is granted. The second letter in there was one that we received dated September 1st, which was from the Office of Construction and Facilities Management for the Department of Veterans Affairs, and they had to review the plans for the renovation, and that took a couple of months for them to review that, and they also gave their approval for the plans for the renovation of the 5th floor. Speaking of Lorraine, the Community Center, you know, it's had its ups and downs, but we feel that it is moving upwards, it's starting to grow. With this project, there will be an investment of $700,000 to purchase and renovate the 5th floor. As you know also, we finally got the state grant for $1.6 million, and that was primarily due to the effort of Don Bates, Don Addy, Sam Felton, Betty Sutton and her crew, folks from the city of Lorraine that went to Columbus and fought for that, because it was in danger of being, of going down the tubes. It's approved, the front end of the building will be torn off, the back end will be torn off, new parking, the whole area is going to be spruced up, a lot of green areas, so that facility is starting a resurgence. Lorraine County Community College has expanded in there, originally, we had 7,000 square feet, and now we're expanding to 22,000 square feet in that building. New programs going in, the old emergency room has been in the process of being renovated for training for medical personnel there, so it's moving. And we're happy to be a part of that growth, and we're happy to be a part of that growth, specifically to help homeless veterans. Let's talk a little bit about our program. Family and Community Services is the overarching structure for this organization that we, the Executive Committee, and also the members, the veterans in the county, are part of, and we couldn't do it without the grassroots support from the veterans organizations and from the public. The target population is homeless veterans, male veterans in Lorraine County, and prior to this, there was no current supportive housing targeted for veterans in Lorraine County. VA focused a five-year plan to end homelessness, that's their goal. Veterans make up 16% to 20% of the homeless population, but only 11% of the general population. And many homeless veterans are dealing with substance abuse and/or mental health issues, and also physical issues. Nationally, there's approximately 107,000 veterans homeless on any particular night in the United States. We can only attack a small portion of that, and that's what we're going to try to do. Our proposed facility will have 30 beds for single males, individual rooms, each will have toilet and sink facility, there'll be office space, a computer room, shared common areas to include a kitchen, lounge, dining area, meditation area, and meeting rooms. This will require that the 5th floor be rehabilitated, and just to show you how this program is working, in Portage County, the veterans that were in the facility over there receive counseling, case manager develops an individual development plan for them to try to break that cycle of poverty, get them back into the mainstream again. They also do their research too, to look at what kinds of employment are needed in the immediate area. One of the things that was evident is that there was a need for personnel that were certified in asbestos removal, so through various programs, they were able to fund a group of individuals that went through extensive training on removal of asbestos. Those individuals will be part of the rehabilitation effort here at St. Joseph's Center. And most recently, they were hired to work on one of the movies that was being filmed in Cleveland, and they did it in some old abandoned buildings and everything, they were the ones that went in and they cleaned up all of those areas to make it habitable, so that the folks could go in there and do their movie production. So, these are the kinds of things they're looking at. One of the other programs they did is they took a group of individuals and sent them through training on small equipment, lawn and gardening equipment, tractors, brushhogs, hand tools, power tools, and formed a small group that would then bid on contracts, usually state or county contracts, to do maintenance work and yard work. And, now this is not a kind of a job that a lot of folks are going to make a career out of, but it's a start, to get them back into the habit of working, break that cycle of poverty, and eventually let them branch out onto other things, enter back into the mainstream of society. The proposed facility on the 5th floor will encompass about 16,000 square feet. The neighborhood, obviously, being co-located with the VA outpatient clinic in the same building is a plus. Lorraine County Community College and its programs, it's right on the Lorraine County Transit Line, near Department of Jobs and Family Services, and in the future, what we're looking at is, once we get this program up and running, we want to branch out and include a facility for female veterans. And then a third phase of that would be permanent supportive housing for veterans at St. Joe's in one of the floors there. We began fundraising in July 2011, after receipt of this grant of 400, roughly $470,000, there's a portion of that, that's 2/3 of the project that VA has funded, the other 3rd of that is coming from the community. Many of the veterans organizations that are here today are holding different fundraisers to raise money to adopt a room, one of the bedrooms, some of them have already done that, they've adopted those rooms. Part of that, roughly $250,000 that we need to raise from the community, also will be given credit for volunteer work, and that's where Carol Knapp is going to come into play, and that is to coordinate volunteers from the different organizations and from the community that will come in and do grunt work, it's all for the cause, they'll go in, they'll scrape, they'll paint, they'll polish, those hours VA will give us credit for, dollar-wise, towards that goal of the $250,000 to help that. It's a community-based effort, we could not do it without all of the community, and without the support of our veterans. We hope to begin construction very soon, the legal eagles have the paperwork right now to do the final transfer of the ownership of the 5th floor from South Shore to Family and Community Services. And we hope to start occupation in the spring, 2012. Part of that occupation, there will be a screening process for veterans, we were looking for veterans that are one or two steps away from getting back into the mainstream, at least in the first program, or the first round of that. Intensive counseling, like I said, there'll be two caseworkers that will work for, with a group of each of those, see what they need, both physically, mentally, if there's addiction problems, VA is there, we also have a group of volunteers who are licensed counselors that will come in also and help gratis, will help with, you know, try to break those addictions if that's the case. So that's part of what we're targeting right now, and then afterwards, what happens? Well, we have the money for the construction, well, how are we going to run it? VA is going to give us approximately $40 per person, per day, per diem, to take care of our operational costs. There will be two case managers, and also a program manager on site, and then there will also be a group of housing specialists, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so there's also a small group of folks that will be employed because of this project. Supporting us, social work liaison between our program and the Department of Veterans Affairs, we've already made a presentation last week to Lorraine County Community College Veterans Committee. Committee. Krista O'Neil is the Veteran Coordinator at Lorraine County Community College. Her and her staff have volunteered to come out whenever we need them to help our veterans apply for their benefits, to get them enrolled in school, if that's what they need, help them navigate through the bureaucracy of the paperwork. Ohio Jobs and Family Services Veterans Coordinator, Ron Ramsey, and his people are standing by to help as much as they possibly can. And I already mentioned the volunteers that have come forth and then joined our group to help with drug and alcohol addiction. Roughly expenses will be approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for operating expenses. That includes staff, supplies, utilities, food. And again, that per diem, and at full occupancy, the per diem will take care of that four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's, in a nutshell, the program, but a lot of work has gone on, you know, from the core group with Don Bates and some of the other folks that pushed it along and did the grunt work. And then eventually, a committee was formed and then we invited, in fact, in July, we invited all of the veterans organizations and their auxiliaries, their commanders, to come to a dinner at which we presented this program. And then from that, they've each gone back to their different posts and are working to raise money for the Adopter Room Program and everything. Grassroots, it's happening because of the veterans. And again, probably, the estimates are that we have twenty-four thousand veterans in Lorraine County. Not that they're all going into veterans posts, but a large percentage of them are or they are associated with or family members are. So, again, it's grassroots raising up. That's my presentation, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions you might have.
I just want to say, I couldn't be happier that this has gotten this far. I mean, it's been a long time coming. And it started all with all of us working very hard to keep St. Joe's open when they were threatening to close down. So, actually, I'm not wearing something for Halloween. Let me just show you what my shirt says on the back so you can see. Remember that?
Sure.
Look, St. Joe's. And a lot of people spent a lot of time and a lot of negativity was going around saying there's no way this could work, there's no way we're going to be able to keep that place open, and you know. And we didn't let those naysayers keep us from still fighting to keep it open, and thank God we did because, you know, it started with that, but look at where we've come, where you've come. And I just want to give the praise to the veterans for all their hard work and dedication to their fellow comrades. You know, the people, you know, they're sticking up for the guys that can't stick up for themselves. And I think that's what being a veteran is all about. Forty dollars a day seems kind of inexpensive to house somebody, but if you think that's going to do it, that's great. I was just wondering, what's the maximum length of stay for?
Two years.
Two years?
Yes. And we're hoping to, you know, obviously shorten that tremendously. And the first group that'll come in, you know, there's going to be some trial and error. We'll see what works and what doesn't work. And that'll be the litmus test then, is how many of those folks will see it through to the end, get back into the mainstream again. It's a new program, and it's got a lot to be worked out, but we've got the force behind us.
Yes.
We've got our veterans.
This is, I think, what we all envisioned when we were sitting at Chris's restaurant every once a week for how many weeks, you know, thinking, well, eventually, you know, let's keep it open. This is what the veterans wanted to see happen, you know, eventually. But I honestly, I didn't think it would happen that fast. So, you guys have really streamlined this, and I just want to say that I'm very, very proud of all of you. Yeah.
Very worthwhile project. I started working with Todd Robey on this and Stu Littner a year and a half ago. We're still trying to figure out if we're going to be able to save the St. Joe's. And it wasn't just the city of Lorraine down there saving it, the county was right there.
Okay.
But yeah, worthwhile project. It's been successful in the past in Portage. So, I mean, Summit, Lorraine County should follow suit, so good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Danny.
Part two done?
Yes. I'll be short and brief.
You guys know about the Lighthouse Learning Center that's going in there, too, from?
Yes.
Okay. Because, are you, were you going to talk about that today? Okay.
Another worthy cause.
Yes.
Okay, on behalf of, behalf of the veterans and also our veterans here, we, the veterans of Lorraine County, request Lorraine County Veteran Service Commission's offices be moved to the first floor at St. Joe's Community Center, co-locating the Lorraine County Veteran Service Commission Office with the VA Clinic, the Valor Home. Will serve to improve the quality and the life of our veterans of Lorraine County, also our veterans coming home today. Many of our veterans organizations in Lorraine County have already voiced their support and requests, the ones that couldn't be here today. They include Catholic war veterans, Italian war veterans, Jewish war veterans, Korean war veterans, National Association of Black Vets, Alaria Vets Council, Lorraine Vets Council, Military Order of the Purple Heart, Marine Corps League, Alaria, American Legion Post eight, twelve, and one eighteen, DAV Post twenty, forty-nine, AMVets Post thirty-two, forty-seven, and fifty-five, VFW Post four fifty-one, ten seventy-nine, sixteen sixty-two, seventy thirty-five, eighty-six, eighty-six, ninety-three forty, and ninety-eight seventy-one. And also, the Lorraine County Vietnam Veterans Memorial Committee. Other veterans in their posts have their monthly meetings later this week, and then we expect some more support and requests after they have the change of their polls and their meetings. So, I guess basically what we're trying to say is, we think it's the better for all veterans. It will help centralize, make it, if you will, a one-stop shop. You may have an appointment there for blood work, or see the doctor, or whatever the case might be, and then maybe look into your claim or resources available to you so you can be directed down the hall or up to the second floor and that, and we're not traveling around the county. So, with that, again, I thank you. Thank you for listening, and God bless our veterans. And I think my shirt says it all.
No public comment?
Public comment.
Oh, okay, Mike, you've got something.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mr. Cortez, Mr. Innes, Ms. Upton. I'm here today to-
Hello, so you are, Michael.
Oh, I am Mike Challander, and I serve on the board at the pleasure of the county Commissioners for the South Shore CDC and-
Which is St. Joe's.
Which is St. Joseph Community Center.
Right.
And I also attended the meeting in Columbus with the veterans promoting the approval of the core funding, which will help eliminate some of the older portions of the building and make it more inviting for new tenants. Tomorrow, there's going to be an open house, and the open house is going to be highlighting the expansion from Lorraine County Community College and their medical assisting program. And it also is going to include Little Lighthouse Learning Center. And Little Lighthouse Learning Center is going to, is a teaching daycare facility for children two and a half to eleven years old. And that open house, everyone's invited. It's from three until six tomorrow. And at five o'clock, the Lorraine Sports Hall of Fame will have an open house of their own, a separate facility. And I want to thank you for, on behalf of the South Shore CDC, I would like to thank the veterans for buying the fifth floor and putting a big presence in downtown Lorraine at the St. Joseph Community Center. And I want to let you know that I volunteered to do all your painting there, so let me know. Thank you.
I like to help with painting as well. I'm a really good painter. I don't even need to tape things off, so I'll help, I'll help do painting, too.
Can we get that in writing?
Absolutely.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? Come up, Sam.
Good morning, esteemed members of council and my fellow veteran brothers. On behalf of all of us who are contained in the veteran community, I'd like to say thank you for granting us this time to hear our needs and our plight because, in all actuality, I have to agree with Don and most of our veterans here that to have all our facilities contained in the St. Joe's Community Center would be a boon, not only for our veterans, but for Lorraine County as well. And also, clearly, you see there is a need for this facility and a pulse that we've all touched because look at our turnout today. And Lori, thank you for everything you did.
You're welcome. I think when we talked about this back months and months ago, maybe it was the last year even, last year, that was, part of our intention, too, was to move our veteran services over to St. Joe's. And it seems to make the most sense, and I think us as a board would like to see that happen eventually, too. The problem is, it's, there's going to be a cost factor involved in that. If there's a way that your grassroots effort could help to offset the cost of moving, we may be able to look at something like that. But right now, I don't know if you know this, if you've been reading the papers, but two thousand and, next year, two thousand and twelve, there's only two million dollars more that we have to cut out of an already cut-to-death budget, but two thousand and thirteen is ten million dollars in cuts, which will be, I mean, crippling Lorraine County. We don't have any extra dollars to do anything at this point. You know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I mean, what we have for the veteran services now is not broke. It's not the best. It would be better at St. Joe's, but it's not the best. We have things that are broke right now that we're not fixing. We have a parking deck that wants to fall down. We have roofs all over the county that need replaced that we don't have money to replace. And I'm not saying that you guys are not a priority because you are, but we don't have any extra funds to do anything at this point. But we're not opposed to moving to St. Joe's. It's not that we don't want them there, we just don't have the money to make that move at this point.
Well, I think as veterans, we truly understand that America is in a crisis, financial crisis, that everybody has to tighten their belt. However, I would think that with contained within this room, there is enough collective intelligence and creativity to surmount this problem. Thank you.
How's that?
You'll find a way.
Who's got the creative hat on today, anybody?
Anyone, I'm working on issue twenty-two. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning?
We would hope to have the veteran's support on issue twenty-two, and it would be almost a no-brainer then, not that we're holding that as, you know, over your head, if you do this, we'll do that. But we would hope to have your support for issue twenty-two. It's greatly needed in Lorraine County. It's your county.
Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Ms. Kaski.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. That was probably the best pledge allegiance we've ever had here in our Commissioners' meeting.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.